I'm going to start the meeting by offering the Pledge of Allegiance as an option. And then we'll have just a moment of silence for the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item of this to amend the agenda. Do I have any suggestions to amend the agenda?
Let's look at the previous minutes from February 12. They are in our packet on the computers.
I have AHR copy here. You guys have copies of each other's?
Yeah.
I do.
That was difficult because do you guys want to comment on what they're looking at?
I have a paper copy of it today, so you're talking about last meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a motion? I'll make the motion. I second. All right, any discussion on the minutes from last meeting? Okay, I'll take a vote. Ryan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. All right, so we have proof of minutes from February 12. Public comments for items not on the agenda. I guess that's one person. Any comment there? Logan, I don't know, any comment? Let's start with new business, discussion item, town meeting.
So, just as a reminder, next Monday at seven o'clock at the Welcome Center is the the town meeting that gets adjourned to Australian ballot voting on Tuesday for majority of the items around the morning. So
It says seven P M.
Seven, yeah. So for those who've been around for a long time, it used to be the school board and the select board would be the same thing. They would hold it over at the auditorium in the school, but when they became a school district, they'd have to hold their own town meeting for the school. They're doing that separately. I don't know off the top of my head what day that is. But so this is where the the warning is read, comments are taken on the individual warnings. The non-financial items are voted on from the floor. One exception is the Sally's, the Stiglins for the select board. It's the only financial item that is voted on. The rest are read. Outside agencies often don't take the opportunity to comment. So that's what will happen. It will be broadcast, but you will not be able to participate remotely, which is the same as it's been in other. It's, Paula can explain it better, but you can watch and hear, but you can't ask questions. Those in the audience certainly will have that opportunity later on on this agenda. The next time it's going to be to make motion to appoint Andy Tufts to fill the moderator's position for terminating in 2025. It starts with that meeting. So if there's any questions on what else to expect, the answer I think. Okay. See you Monday. It would be good to be there in person since you're a select board member and you can't participate in a vote. So if there's no votes that you need to take, but you may want to make comments as a part of it.
But Ryan will be there.
Yeah, right. So you don't need that at Quorum, but the three of you should be there.
I'll be there.
Okay. Action item, this is the motion to appoint Andy Tufts to the position of moderator, just for this meeting for the upcoming town meeting. Do I hear a motion? I'll second. Any discussion about the appointment? I will say that Andy was the moderator last year, so he's experienced and knows what he's doing. Any other discussion? All right, Ryan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Okay, Andy is the moderator. This is a discussion item, municipal finances and cash positions.
Give me a moment. I need individual aid. The wheel there, Portland.
Yeah, that is my kind of official award.
Okay, I, this is in the online packet, and I have mentioned a couple of meetings about digging more deeply into the municipal finances and engaging the more, the board more on the awareness of how we do things and how much money we have and provide more structure and how we move around and things like that. And I've asked Natalia to work on that, and she has. This is the result of her work that we went over today. There's too much here for you folks and me to all absorb and then have a regular conversation on. So I put this in here. It's on, like I said, it's in the board member packet. Look at it as much as you want. Okay, there's a lot of information in here. Natalia put this together from a, let's say, a finance perspective rather than an operations perspective, and it's good. It's, basically what this says is it says, this is how much money we have. This is where it is. This has been our experience and how we've had, how much money we've had to spend for the remainder of the fiscal year March through June. And this is our experience and how much additional money we're going to collect. So we have this much in the bank. We expect to receive this much more. We expect to have to pay this much out. And in, you know, very general terms, we have about $2.8 million in the bank in a variety of places. We are going to need 2.2 million between now. We're going to need an additional 2.2 million above what we're going to have in our general fund savings account and in the cash flow projections. And that's not unusual. So what we will be going over, how are we going to meet all of our obligations and start the new fiscal year again? The simple way I tried to describe things is if we were perfect, we would end the fiscal year spending the last dollar we budgeted on the last day. And we would, the last dollar we collected would go away on the last day. So we would end perfectly on balanced budget, no money in the bank and no bills to pay. But on July 1st, we had to start paying bills again and paying people. So we, so we always start in the rears. And we always have delinquencies in our taxes and in our utility bills. So there's always a hole, we'll say, of a half a million dollars or so anyway. There is tax anticipation bond that we're mandated to pay back before the end of the year. There's a lot of things that goes into that. Board votes on that. We have, we get one every year. We have to pay it back before the end of the year. And we have 2.2 million dollars in school payments that we have to make. It's half. We've made two payments. We have two more to make. So, you know, on the one hand, right now, it looks like we're on budget, like not much over, not much under is, you know, right about where we need to be. So that's like, that's the operating side of what we do. Water and Sewer looks to be about the same. So we take all of our three companies, we'll say the town, the water and the sewer. And how are we doing versus what we told the town that we were going to do as far as raising money and spending money? And then there are other things that impact cash flow, like having to pay the school whether we collect the taxes or not. Like having, we've spent $200,000 on emergency radios. We haven't got the grant money back, so there's another 200,000. We have a fire truck coming in that is being paid for almost exclusively by a grant, but we're going to have to buy the truck first. And we're going to have to then submit for reimbursement. So there's, there's a number of those kinds of factors that go in. And in, in, in what I hope to have in place by sometime over the summer is a monthly report to the select board. Here's our money. Here's where we are to budget. And it'd be like a one pager that gives you the high level thing. That I come to you and I say, our, our first tax collection date is September 9th or something like that. So we need money from somewhere. So we've, we have already attained a tax anticipation note that you had to vote for to approve. That'll be sometime in April or May. We need to draw this much money. And you guys say, okay, and you understand what's happening. Then we get to our tax collection date and we're flush with cash and we go through and we pay. There's a lot of bond debt due in November and things like that. We get down to December again. Everyone kind of tight. December's always hard because our expenses are kind of front loaded. Then we get to right about now where we're flush because the second tax installment is due. The second utility payments are due, so we have money on hand. And all of the money that the board has voted to put in the reserve funds, capital for the town, the water, the sewer, all the money is where it's supposed to be. And that's how we have all this money today. So if everything goes according to, you know, the easiest structure, where we always take money from, the main obligations that we don't have, the, we'll say, operating capital, is we go to our tax anticipation note. So we'll just, we'll pick a number and say it's $2 million. And we draw 300,000, and we draw 500,000, and we draw 200,000, and we get to the end of the year. And however it all shakes out, we're we've got to pay back whatever we borrowed by June 30th. That's always difficult. So then I come to you and say, let's borrow 500,000 from the Capital Reserve, from the Water Sewer, blank, blank, at, for 60 days at 1% interest. That's a part that we haven't been doing. But I think that really helps clarify what's going on. And you can ask questions of why we're happy to do it at those times. You do all that kind of stuff. We borrow the money, taxes come in, we pay it all back. And the cycle continues. But it's not a matter of, I want to make sure, this isn't a matter of we're running deficits. It's a matter of cash flow. The the other aspect of this is that we, what it looks like is cumulatively over the years. We had, it really, we were like break even until fiscal '23 and fiscal '24, we ran a deficit of somewhere around 225,000. So that is related to a lot of things. A lot of it has to do with the pay raises that were unbudgeted that went in there. So it's not, not surprised, but once we said, here's where all my money is. I'm going to come to the board and I'm going to suggest that you transfer money from our reserve fund to the general fund to make us whole, you know, so we don't carry forward. The other option is to raise taxes higher to cover the prior year deficit. I'd rather put money in the savings account. Like if we have a surplus at the end of the year, the, the board will be asked to either use that as revenue to buy down a tax rate or to put it in a reserve fund for a rainy day kind of thing. So just, it's a more structured format and you'll see monthly reports. Then we'll be asked to make decisions. You'll see the results of those decisions and we follow up enough and the cycle will continue. And we've been working on this a long time. Natalia, I'll take just a moment to digress. Last week, both Natalia and I went to visit Ron at home and separately. And Ron's in hospice care. It's, it's tough for his family and he hung in there. No right to, he couldn't walk, you know, upstairs to his office. And he's been a great mentor to Natalia. Natalia brings a different skill set than Ron did. And all of this structure has been much more in Natalia's wheelhouse. So when it became apparent that Ron wasn't going to be able to contribute to this anymore, Natalia had been working on this already and she's reached out to VLCT expert on finance, Bonnie, who's our auditing firm, to really get in and pull the structure in with, you know, the understanding that whoever comes next after me, I said forever, I want to get the finances straightened up. That there, there's this, you can do whatever you want with the money and make decisions, but I want to make sure it's very clear what we have for resources and what the limitations on how to spend them. So Ron would really get into the nuances of finance and he and I would kind of talk past each other. I have to be able to explain this to the board. You can explain it to me. Now we do it like this. This is, this is the result of Natalia boiling some things down, but you're going to get like three pages, one for the water, one for the sewer, and one for the general fund. All of this is going to be in the background and over the next six months or so, you're going to be given policies on how to spend capital on updated on reserve fund policy, policies on how you borrow money from the different funds, things like that. So I'll say, you know, one thing that makes it a little bit different this year is when we go to the bank to secure a tax anticipation note, that's essentially going to the bank saying, we would like to borrow money in anticipation of this amount of tax we're going to collect. So in fiscal '24, we secured a $1.75 million tax anticipation note, and we didn't use anything. Banks don't like that because they have to keep an amount of reserves to cover the loans that they issue. So they put aside that much money and they didn't make any money on interest from us. And it just so happened at the time we had different funds coming, like ARCO was one of the things. We hadn't spent any of the money yet, so we had a lot of cash on hand. By the end of the year, oh, we also had loans that the vehicles kept getting delayed. So we had the money. We didn't need to borrow a second time. We could use that and catch up. So we went to get the tax anticipation up this year and they said, well, we don't want to give you that much because you didn't need to use any last year. So they only approved 1.2 million. So 1.2 million, a little different financial situation, we'll get by. But it's with, the need to borrow from ourselves is there this year where it wasn't in the past. So I think this year we will look more at like a $2 million number. In the one real wild card that I've mentioned before, the amount we have to pay the school has increased by almost $450,000 this year. And we collected, we have to give it to the school whether it's the only one or not, and the school is great and working with us. They're not saying it's due today. You better give us the money. But nonetheless, it's a, it's a big number, you know, a million won each quarter. Can I do anything else to muddy the water on town finances or?
Sounds like Cliff is already in a lot.
You will. The good news is we have, you know, a fair amount of money in the bank, so that part's good. The other thing I'll do, and this has always been like the untouchable holy money. It's the Hoyzington Fund that is the result of a lawsuit settlement. I think it was a good year where they, I hope I'm getting it right. They put stuff in the town landfill and it wasn't good stuff. They got caught. So there was a settlement with the town and in the town. So they had 400,000. It goes back a long time. And the, and the agreement that was reached amongst the select board at the time was that you couldn't touch the 400,000 of it, didn't borrow from it, but you could use excess of 400,000. Like if you made interest on it, you could refund it in the past, 4,000 or 10,000. But if it's under 400,000, we don't. And it has sat in a Charles Schwab account forever. And there were reasons behind it. Who lived in town at the time and helped invest the money. And it's, let's say, almost no risk investment. It's been fine. But it is kind of an outlier by itself. So I started a process to move the money from Schwab account to the Mascombe Wealth Management folks. So they will handle the transfer internally. It will all move in kind of whatever's cash is in it. Roughly, there's 200,000 in cash and 200,000 in various securities. With no intention of changing it right now, but when they ask, what kind of investor profile would you prefer? My answer has been similar to a pension fund that it can have certainly some ability for growth, but growth isn't the issue. Preservation of principal and perpetuity is basically what that is. So it'll just be more incorporated into the rest of our financial portfolio as far as oversight.
It would more be labeled as a Hoyzington Fund, you know?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it will have its own settlements. Yes, it's all right. It's just, just the bank isn't as different.
Right, okay. Questions? There's no vote. There's no decisions. It's just a time for questions. Okay, thank you. Next is action item, where to consider allocation of the ARCO funds to the reserve fund. Do I hear a motion?
Well, hang on a second. Probably, it was something on the agenda. I can, we can do it. It would be probably more accurate and you would have more information next, next meeting. Yeah, I know it's about $215,000 and that it's a result of 90,000 and it's not been allocated at all. And the fact that the radios cost less and we had allocated 150 for that. But I think as a matter of record keeping and clarity, to put together the documentation that says, here's why, here's the motion. I think you can just do that next week.
Okay, so that's kind of a last minute minimum.
Yes.
So we will reschedule that for in March.
Right.
All right, action item, consider setting the date in town for the select board organizational meeting. And that will be, needs to be scheduled for next week after the voting ends.
Yeah, the charter says within three days of town meeting. So that's Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday. They usually, unless the board has other intentions, only does the election of officers, they can take anywhere from five minutes to 25 minutes. We've done it anywhere from 10:30 in the morning, when that worked for some board members, five o'clock, seven o'clock, whatever.
I know, I don't know what Eric would say, but if I am reenacted, it would be 6:30 on Wednesday.
On Wednesday?
That like if it's on Tuesday, but, or it could be Thursday.
Thursday and Friday is better for me, but if, if it's going to be Wednesday, I don't think that works.
Thursday's not an option for me.
Okay.
I can do Wednesday fine.
I can be here whenever. Just tell me when.
What about like Friday at like 4:30? I can do that.
Ryan?
Yeah, whatever. I just would prefer it's in the evening.
Is 4:30 late enough for you?
Yeah, really after 3:30, 3:45 is fine.
So
4:30 Friday is then?
Yeah, 4:30 is good Friday.
I'll make a motion to have the organizational meeting Friday, March 7th at 4:30 P M.
Do it here, sir. I second. Okay, Ryan, how do you vote?
You can choose to abstain as long as the other three stay.
Sorry, yeah, aye.
Okay, abstain. Okay. Aye. Okay, so schedule for 4:30, March 4th. Which is nice.
March 7th.
March 7th, I'm sorry.
That's close.
March 4th is Mardi Gras and election day.
That's what's going on.
You guys are going to throw in a Mardi Gras?
You can't vote? Like Brian's obviously Mardi Gras. Listen to what's going on in the background.
It sounds like it.
Okay, so we have to take the poll business, liaison report.
I have one.
Okay, let's do it.
All right, so the planning commission met last month, on the 13th. And Erin Lyske, she's from the Mascombe Regional Commission, and she discussed Act 181 with the planning commission. The, I'll say the short version is Act 181 was passed in the law in June 2024. It overholds Vermont's planning framework for coordinating state, regional, and municipal land use. This document provides a summary of Act 181 related to so I brought two, two descriptions of one Act, Act 181. I'll pass it around so you guys can take a look at it. But basically it's like they make a future land use map. They call it a blue map. And it would guide development in Windsor County region by designating areas for growth, conservation, and other purposes like environmental infrastructure and community factors. I think ultimately this is something that's going to help make development a little easier in Windsor. So I will pass these for you guys to work on. And then they had a special meeting last night on the 25th. And they've been working on an application for a grant to get help. It's going to be with the bylaws. And so the application was passed over to Hallie and Erin with Mark. And she's going to kind of fine tune the application, make sure everything is all set. The deadline's March 31st, but it's looking like they're going to at least get to apply for this. So I think they seem to be in a good spot right now.
Questions? Thank you for the update.
Sure, we have it already.
Questions? I can update that Elizabeth Burrows and I have connected again. Rather than her come to a select board meeting, she will give us the update at the meeting Monday. We talked, we called it Tuesday last time about having her come back. So she'll do that. Any other updates? Tell me about your report.
It's not uncommon to get complaints about the website, particularly the searchability of the documents and things like that. And there has been, still is, very little uniformity amongst municipalities on how they do and what they use. But over time, there has been a couple of companies that have become, I'll say, widely used across the industry. One of those is Civic Plus. And I sat in on a conversation with Sean Mahal, the city manager in Lebanon. They use it and he was discussing how easy it is to search and how easy it is for the employees to use. They have a lot more resources and liquidity, so it's easy. I brought that idea to Marco Vasquez, who is the person who does our social media. He manages websites for some clients down in the metro of New York area. He and I, Wiley and Tiffany, sat in on a short presentation from Civic Plus earlier in the week to just, they wanted to get a sense of us, what we're looking for, and gave a short overview of how they do it. That resulted in a demonstration, I think, next Monday, about an hour, where the same person will walk us through. In very general sense, we have a lot of plugin applications that would still work, the MyRec thing, the PayOnline. What else do we have? Probably right now, those are the two that I can think of that are really outside for us. Civic Plus has their own, but you don't need your own. You can use these outside ones. And to me, one of the big selling factors is their staff looks at our website and they say, okay, we understand what you're doing here. It's not all that different from everybody else. Here's some basic things like what do you want it to look like, pictures, colors, that kind of stuff. And then they give you a template, a draft outlet, and they migrate the information before it goes public. They say, okay, here's what it will look like for us. And since like right now we use Box, which is not part of Squarespace, their, their storage is all internal, which helps with the efficiency of the searches. Oh, I know we have, we're working with another vendor on online forums, do zoning permits and stuff like that online. So that will be incorporated, our sort of database that's now online will be incorporated. We just got the link for our now assessors information for the last revow. So if somebody needs to do property records, they'll be able to get those online. So all of those things are different modules. They would all work through this one. Or if someday we wanted to use their entire suite, you can, you know, buy theirs as well. I think we're going to look at others. Cliff, I met with the other day. Cliff had some opinions on that. I'm going to invite him to sit in on this demonstration. For those who don't know, Cliff McGodden has an IT background. For those who don't know, Cliff McGodden has an IT background, right?
He what?
Has an IT background.
Yes.
I don't know exactly what it is, but I know he works in the field, so. Good enough for me too, so. Anyway.
I don't know what he does either, no.
Well, and it's, I, I sent out a little Survey Monkey thing to area town managers and just asked, what do you, here, here's the top like five vendors, do you use one of these or another one, are you happy or not? Do you have any dedicated IT web, webmaster? Nobody does. Is it easy to use or not? And nobody said mine is terrible. So everybody has found a solution. What I'm looking for is, our current website was designed by actually Ryan Dowler, the business partner he had back in the day, I think the partner now lives in Germany. And Ryan does what he does and he's always very helpful and Wiley knows how to use it. But there isn't really anybody we can call to say, change all the interests, or we need something else. So I'm looking for something that can be a sort of industry standard format that will work if boards or managers want to change them, not as worried about legaling out of business, but it's also going to be very cost effective, it's, it can't be something where you're paying for all kinds of bells and whistles that you'll never use, so.
So question, is there any interface between our website and the school? Is that, is, does that exist? And if so, is this going to impact? Because I know we use Ryan for our support.
Well, all the IT support won't change.
Okay.
So this is just, the web support, also, best way to describe it is we need something, they do it as a favor because of Ryan's knowledge with it.
Right.
You look at the school website and our website, there's nothing similar, I don't know what they use for theirs, I talked to them first, I said, are you interested in being involved in this process? And they were, we'll be glad to help in any way we can to support you, but that's really not a core of where we are, we're pretty darn busy, so. So I'll keep, keep you updated.
I'm excited that we're going to explore.
Me too.
And if you want to go, Lebanon, Lebanon, I think Enfield, New Hampshire, both use Civic Plus, so go there, use their little chat bot and say, hey, how, do I have to, you know, whatever, where, where's the dump? Or, you know, whatever, if you, do I need a permit if I want to build a garage?
Okay. Okay, um, do we have orders to sign tonight? We do. Do I hear a motion to sign orders? I have a motion to sign one. A second. Okay. Ryan, do you vote to sign orders?
Yes, aye.
Okay. Aye, 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 okay. We can work on those before we, um, we're done.
As always, the orders are put in the online file as they are generated during the course of a couple of weeks of month, we just need to sign the cover page.
Love it. All right. Now it's time for public comments for items not on the agenda. Do I hear any from the audience? Okay. Board member comments. Ryan, would you want to lead us off with board member comments?
Oh, I don't have anything, just, uh, no, I'm all good.
Thank God for the nice weather and I'm looking forward to town meeting day and I'll see you there, Windsor.
No.
No? I thought you said it was Monday.
Did you say I'll see you on Wednesday?
No.
I thought you said Monday.
Monday is the.
Monday is our.
Tell me, she did say that.
She did say Monday.
I think you said it right.
I'm sorry.
Oh my God, I'm so tired, I just wanted to say I'm excited for Tommy. You got Jesus Christ. Okay. Thank you so much. Oh, I'm so, nevermind, actually, I have that.
Make sure you get out and vote Tuesday for town meeting day.
I don't really have anything, I just, I'm looking forward to starting to meet here on the select board with our new members. So I guess that's all I have to say right now.
Better not be any minute.
Nice. I think the orders are signed, so I'm going to adjourn to a, an executive session, so we're going to stop recording. Oh, I need a motion to adjourn to the.
I'll motion.
Everyone can say, a second. Okay, Ryan, are you okay with adjourning to the executive session?
What's that?
Adjourning to the executive session?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Everyone, a second. Aye, aye, aye. Okay, so we're in executive session.
So why do I?
Are we recording? She got it unrecorded. And a recording error.
And he'll still be?
He'll still be.
Okay, hold on.
Manage recording. Do it.
Jeez. That's why I like a, a mouse.
I like wanting to be without a mouse.